To the flag that the United States is America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. In this day and age, that's extremely important that we remember that. Liberty and justice for all. But we are United Nations. So our clerk treasurer is also not with us tonight. She will be taking the minutes off the recording. So our meeting tonight recorded will be on YouTube. The intention tonight is to get through critical items that need to be addressed in a timely fashion and other items that can be delayed. We would like to propose to the council that we would get through the critical things and then recess until next Tuesday. So let me first call roll, and then we'll discuss the meeting. So Councilmember Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
And then Mayor Pilon, and then Commander Heath from the Sheriff's Department. So to the council members, the idea would be to get through what's critical tonight and then recess until next Tuesday, the 20th, at 7:00 PM. Does that schedule work for the council members?
It works for me.
Works for Councilmember Greenberg?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Rainville, it does work for me.
So it does work for Councilmember Rainville?
It works for Councilmember Blake.
This is Jay, and I can make it work too.
All right, so right now, it's all five can make Tuesday. So Tuesday, 7 o'clock. At this point, we'll plan on meeting here unless there's further discussion. We still have the hybrid option to us as long as the pandemic exists.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Rainville.
I just keep on my total thoughts, but I also understand my views on COVID. Yeah, I prefer to go back to Zoom until things are looking better. But I will go with this majority of the council, though I will not be in attendance other than over the phone.
Understood. Councilmembers, preference for Tuesday? Councilmember Greenberg?
I'm OK with going live in person.
Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
I'd be content with either one.
All right. So at this point, we'll plan on live. If anything changes, we will have the clerk address it in the proper manner to make sure we need open meeting logs. Our agenda tonight will be as presented here, but we will not be going through each of the items in order to expedite our meeting. Do we have anything from the council members that they want to adjust on the agenda? I will tell you that the key items to me is the consent agenda should be pretty straightforward. Floor items, we do have somebody here, I believe, for floor items. Commander Heath will be discussing the sheriff's contract. Obviously, not something we're voting on at this point. Quarterly financial reports, I would suggest that we wait a week on. Engineering items do need to be addressed tonight. The joint powers agreement Ramsey would like signed tonight. We have planning and zoning items that all can on the agenda can wait, but we do have the Cody lot split that will be addressed tonight. And so if you will add the, I think Lori sent that out, but if you under planning and zoning put the Cody lot split.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
On the Cody lot split, we received the email from our engineer today and the recent received the fact of finding, and I've not had the opportunity to look through any of those. I would just say it's a constitutional to move forward with those. I was saying because I have not been able to read through the documentation.
All right, I will say that based on the planning and zoning, the request was to get additional information in. The information was presented. The engineer was able to look at it and process and make his recommendations. And Planner Stockman, based on the planning and zoning recommendations and the questions that were still outstanding with engineering, did present the finding of facts with a couple of corrections that she worked with the attorney on. So we can go through that at that point, and you can let us know at that point if you're comfortable with what we discuss. Otherwise, if you.
Thank you.
Public Works. The clerk would like to see those things addressed. I still have a little bit of a question on the quarter million dollar truck that I think it would be helpful to have the clerk and Public Works here to discuss. The crack seal plan, I think, can wait. The crack seal people are ready to go, but we still have some cool weather going here. And there was a, in my opinion, the engineer had asked to include crack seals on all the projects we did last year, the 189th, 190th, Krypton, and the Merle's Lane area. And I don't see that on the plan. And so if we are going to meet again in a week, I would speculate we can go with Public Works on Tuesday and not have to address that today since the people we'd have questions of aren't here to ask questions of. So I would make a recommendation that we move with that. Recycle Center, Councilmember Rainville, if you are OK with your RCA waiting a week on the Saturday hours. And we can coincide that with clerk's presentation, if that would be all right?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
That is fine with me. I do under greater hood of hope we do have a question on. But no, I'll take care of that next week.
OK. Facebook page has been put on hold for now, and I would suggest North Metro, there are some questions with that that just came in today. And so I would propose we put that till next week as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
So should we take the entirety of the Public Works and put that off till Tuesday, next Tuesday?
That would be my recommendation. It's up to the council, but that's my recommendation. I would put nine, 10, and 11 all off until next week.
OK.
And then I would take, Councilmember Rainville?
This is Councilmember Blake.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Blake.
OK, it's very difficult to understand you, but I do have, I don't know if you can understand me, but this Facebook tax driver, didn't we want to get that going? Because our drivers leaving on Friday, and they want to hire somebody?
The driver is not leaving on Friday right now. The driver is Dave Howland, and he's not currently working because they don't have anything for him to do until we start hauling. The one who's leaving Friday is the recycle center, and that's Jeremiah.
And wait, and that's the one where tabling, the recycling?
Yes.
OK.
And so the seasonal park and the recycling would have to be posted. And so I did talk to Lori today.
Are we tabling the Mack trucks through the Tuesday?
That's my recommendation unless the council wants to move otherwise.
I'd like to move on that because we've been mucking around with that for quite a while. Unless there's more questions on it, why can't we just pass it?
Well, part is because we've gone over what we budgeted for it by $60,000.
But we have got an explanation for all that.
Well, yeah. I mean, again, if the council's ready to go on it. I was surprised, you know, we had a bid in there for a 2019 truck, and all of a sudden, we're buying a 2021. I had no idea that there's been some discussion on this with the staff for a period of time. We got it less than a month ago. Had some questions that have been answered. But I think that my questions have to do with the capital improvement plan. How does this fit with the other things that are on the capital improvement plan? But it's up to the council. I'm leery of quarter million dollar expenditures that we haven't discussed as a group yet. I know that we, some of the questions were mailed in or emailed into Lori, and we did get those as part of this packet. But I still have some questions. It's up to the council, though.
So you still have questions beyond what was mailed in from Marion, what we talked about at our meeting?
I do.
We did talk about this part at our meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I still have, I still have some concerns, sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Rainville.
This is Councilmember Rainville. I prefer that we extend it a week. I am still looking at the issue of the extensions, the warranty extension, and is it based on what Lori had provided us to my question as for the type of mileage we're doing now? What is their value, is their $4,300 in value of extending? And then I also have a question as to keeping or trading in or selling the same vehicle. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
This is Blake. I think that she addressed that in the last meeting. They were glad they were keeping the old crop. There wasn't much trade-in value, and they felt like it should be, it would be valuable to them to keep it. So I think we've asked about that, and they've addressed the answer that they asked for that. I mean, it was kind of beating the dead horse to go back to the same question we asked before, and they answered.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I propose that we bump this discussion back till next week.
All right. So at this point, our revised agenda would be the consent agenda, floor items, sheriff's contract, engineering items, joint powers agreement, and the Cody lot split.
Would we be, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
Would we be tabling the other three planning and zoning items?
No.
Will we be addressing all of those tonight?
We will not.
We will not? We will only be addressing the Cody lot split tonight?
Right. Liz talked to Brand Name Storage, and they are fine. They have an excavation plan they have to put together and get through the attorney first, so they've got some time there. Ordinance amendments, Liz said were for information. We didn't have action tonight. And we have a property line change split to the Dryden property, but we have nothing in our packet. So while the Drydens are here, we don't have anything that we are able to prepare and understand. And Liz has some input that she wanted to put on that. Since she's not here tonight, that would hold off as well. Does that approved revised agenda work for the council?
I would like to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Alders makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Greenberg seconds the motion to approve the revised agenda. So we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mayor Pilon, aye. So four ayes, one nay, the motion carries. All right. So make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. That's the council meeting minutes from 3/9/2021, financial report and treasurer report and claims dated March 3rd, 2021 through April 6th, 2021, and the approval for Now Then Historical Power Association Condition Use Permit yearly events.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Rainville.
If there's a knock on the second, I will pick it up.
All right, Councilmember Greenberg moves. Councilmember Rainville seconds. All those in favor of approving a consent agenda as presented? Councilmember Alders?
Approve.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
And Mayor Pilon, aye. Floor items. Did you wish to speak about the softball?
Yes.
And would you make sure that the microphone's on there? Touch the bottom button, it should turn green.
Turn green.
Sure.
And state your name and address, please, for the record.
Anthony Schlegel, Zimmerman, Minnesota.
How do you spell your last name, Mr. Schlegel?
S-C-H-L-E-G-E-L.
All right. And you have three minutes.
OK. In the past, we've used the softball fields. I'm representing Elk River Youth Softball. In the past, we've used the softball fields up here in lieu of, we take care of them in lieu of payment for renting them. And we were just wondering if that would be an option again this year.
So the question is that you represent Elk River Youth Softball, and in the past, they have rented this field and the one at Twin Lakes? And in lieu of payment, they have maintained them during their season. And so his request is to do that again. When would your season be starting?
It would be May 1st through July 31st.
All right. So my recommendation would be that you contact our city office, talk to Lori, and make the request there, and she can put it on our agenda item for next Tuesday. And in that way, we can discuss specifics. She can look at what we've contracted in the past, and I would imagine establish a proposal based on what we've done in the past. But as long as the fields haven't been booked up for something else, that's a good use of the field. And if you do a good job maintaining them, it's great for all of us. And what would be the days of your usage?
Just Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday.
Do you know if there's going to be corner balls this year? Jill?
There is discussion.
OK, and that's Wednesdays?
Yes.
All right, if you would contact Lori at the city office. Tomorrow, we're closed on Fridays, but tomorrow or Thursday, we can get that on the agenda for Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any floor items? You guys want to say anything at this point? Since we're not officially addressing? Hang on, Mark. Dryden's anything?
I don't know, you decided not to talk to us, did you?
We don't know what it is because nothing got put in our packet for proposal for your property?
We tried, but it got chopped down. So I'm just curious of what exactly they're looking for.
We're not sure.
It's just a simple lot change. We're changing the lot lines from one way to another, so we're not.
Yeah, and the planner was saying today that it's the access to the lots that has to be explained, that it's not as simple as it would appear. And I said, it would have been nice to have something in the packet so we knew what we were talking about, what was requested and why doesn't that fit? So again, this is something we can work on for Tuesday. Since we don't have any details here, it's pretty hard working remotely and having nothing in front of us to know. So what I would recommend is talking with Lori, saying, here's what we're requesting. Can we be on the docket for Tuesday to explain this? And then in a way, Liz can be here to explain her side of what we're somehow missing, if we're missing something.
So we want to build building on there on the 20 acres that we have unguarded. And they know it's been pushed back. Been trying to do this since December. It seems like from listening to, you know, local neighbors here, they've been working on it a year, almost. Almost a year. And so I'm wondering, do we go to another city maybe, or to another? You know, because this is kind of native of some of this.
That is something that the council is taking into hand. We have received your letter. We've received the information from the Codies. And so we are.
We're just wondering if we just stopped putting more money out into this, you know what?
Well, that's part of the discussion we want to have. There's always two parts of it. One, to get the project done. Two, to understand the breakdown in the process, if there is one. And right now, that's what we're hearing.
This access we're talking about, we've been living on it for 30-some-plus years and using it for excavators. We have built a nice road in there.
You know, I think the question I heard had to do with easement versus owned land. So, but I don't have. And that's why, without Liz here and without any documents in front of me, it's hard to say.
Sure. Yeah, here, you shoot in the dark, I understand. But I'm just telling you that we've owned this for 30-some years. It's not anything different.
I understand. It should be a lot clearer than this.
The surveyor that we're trying to hire comes in and says that we have to, our suit doesn't comply. What does that have to do with anything? On my son's house, too, I don't understand. It's like, are you just trying to find more things for us? It's going to cost us money? I'm confused. Just, you know, just want to know, what do we got to do? Tell us what we got to do.
And at this point, since you are on our revised agenda for Tuesday, what I would recommend is that we get the information that you're requesting in the packet so that we can see it by Thursday night. So come Tuesday, we know what we're talking about. So I would make sure that Lori knows what you're asking and that we can get it in the packet. And it should work with us.
On sometime, and then Tuesday, the 20th, we'll talk.
Correct. That make sense to the council?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lori's going.
All right, so all, Councilmember Greenberg? OK, so, yeah, if you want to talk to Lori tomorrow, make sure, again, remember, we're off, we close on Friday, so get it done. And then we'll have it for discussion on Tuesday. Anybody else? Mark, did you want to say something? Open floor?
I just had a question. I can't hear very well. Were you not reviewing the road, or the road improvements tonight?
We are going to put on the road improvement.
Oh, you are? OK.
All right. Commander Heath?
Mr. Mayor, good evening, councilmembers and citizens. I wanted to, first of all, let you know that Sheriff Stewart sends his regrets. He was planning on being here, but unfortunately, he's tied up working on some other issues right now. But what I was going to talk to the council about tonight is a 2022 law enforcement contract. And I understand that.
Excuse me, Commander, can those on phone, can you hear the commander OK?
Yes.
Councilmember Blake, you good?
Yes, but it's very disappointing that we stopped drilling, muckled up, that's the way it goes, I guess. I don't think there's anything we can do about it.
We'll see if we move the phone over by the commander, if that helps.
How does this sound, councilmembers?
Any better?
Yeah, I think that's better, so thank you.
All right.
All right. I do send, or the sheriff sends his regrets. He'd like to be here, but he's tied up working on some other issues here tonight. And it's kind of an unfortunate time to want to talk about law enforcement contracts. We've got a lot of difficult issues facing our communities and our nation, especially when it comes to law enforcement. There's a lot of concerns about things that are happening. But one of the things I wanted to remind the council of when we talk about law enforcement, and specifically the Anoka County Sheriff's Office, is the relationship and the history that we have with the city. The, I want to remind people what our mission statement is as a sheriff's office. And that is to protect and serve the community in a manner that preserves the public trust. And that's not, those are not just words that were put together on a piece of paper. That is the expectation of our sheriff as to how we provide service to our communities. And in times when things are difficult or when we need to make decisions, that is our guidepost. That's what we use to decide whether or not what we're doing is the right direction to go. And they're very powerful, and it gives us our guidance. And I think it helps us to build the trust that we have with our community. And one of the very things that we are fortunate for, especially in Now Then, in all of Anoka County, we have very good relationships with our cities and our townships and the people that we serve. We're very fortunate for that. And I think a lot of it is based on the people that we have in place and just how much we rely on our mission statement when we do the business of law enforcement. And I guess that kind of leads into what I wanted to talk about in some of the pieces. You know, for some of the council members that have been here for years, this is old hat, and everybody knows the contract and how it works. But I did want to take some time and kind of explain what it is we do and what we have to offer to give that overview for some of those who may not know or may not remember or have never heard it before. And along with that mission statement, one of the things that we pride ourselves in is providing service that exceeds the expectations of not only the people we work for, the city, we're providing a service for the city, but the citizens that we serve. We're trying to exceed your expectations in how we handle ourselves and the business we conduct and how we do our jobs. And we truly try to be ambassadors in the community and not only provide law enforcement services, but also interact with the community in a way that they get to know who we are and what we are, not just somebody in a uniform or things like that. Those are things that we do strive for. And I think we have accomplished many of those things in all the communities we serve. And with that, that leads into my next point of, for everybody's understanding, we provide law enforcement services to all 21 communities in Anoka County, from the very south end of Anoka County in Columbia Heights, bordering Minneapolis, all the way up here in Now Then. And we are the exclusive law enforcement provider for eight of the communities in Anoka County, which means we are basically their police department. Not only are we their sheriff's office, and we provide some of the larger overarching services, but we take care of their daily policing needs as well. And those are the cities of Now Then, Oak Grove, Bethel, East Bethel, Linwood Township, Columbus, Ham Lake, and Andover. We are the police department for all of those cities, for lack of a better term. We're still the sheriff's office, but we are their police department as well. And for those that don't remember, we've been, our sheriff's office was actually formed in 1857, which was the year before the state was actually even a state. And we've been providing law enforcement to all of Anoka County since that time. And I did a little digging just because I'm kind of a nerd for history and found out that Burns Township, which formerly, Now Then is, used to be Burns Township, was incorporated or formed in 1869. And we've been present with this community since then. And we've actually been providing the law enforcement contract services back since 2012, which some of the people on this council are very instrumental in bringing to pass. So we've been here for. So we've been here for years and in in the last years, our role has really increased as the community's grown as well. And for us, for us to provide the services we do, we do it through all six divisions of our office. That's our patrol division, the jail, our criminal investigation division, justice services, the Midwest Regional Forensic Laboratory, and the administration divisions. And in all of those divisions, we have over three hundred employees and volunteers that staff those divisions. And I'll kind of stop for a second if if the council has any questions. Otherwise, I was, I have some more. But I realize I've been talking for a few minutes and wanted to give members a chance to ask questions just about those pieces if if they had any.
Council members have questions or specific things they'd like to hear from the commander on? Seeing and hearing none, Commander, I'll have you continue.
Okay. And and I guess just, I wanted to get into a little bit apart about the why you may want to choose to contract with us versus looking at starting your own police department or contracting with someone else. I go back to our history of providing service to the community and the great relationship that we not only have with the citizens, but the city itself. We've worked very hard to to develop that relationship and it continues to get better over time. And while we're here serving, you know, one of the things I like to bring up as far as why contracting is is a good, a very good option for the city is you pay for however many hours of contract services per day, but because you're contracting with us, we cover those other hours without any charge. And that's part of the contracting services that the sheriff's office has set up, which is a nice way for the city. You don't have to pay for hours that. We try to cover the the heavy call times and do those type of things. And and we've thrown in the rest as as just, we'll do it because we're here and to be good partners with you. And while we have that twenty-four hours of coverage, you know, the 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 city is contracting right now for eight hours of coverage. And that's basically one deputy at a time for eight hours. Well, what that doesn't cover is we also have, or what it doesn't, that picture doesn't paint is we have a a large amount of on-duty resources that also come to bear on any incident that happened in in the city. And just, I was looking back through some calls, just trying to to try to find a good example. And I I found a call where we had fifteen different deputies or detectives assigned to an incident here. And that's not outside agencies. That was just fifteen staff from the Anoka County Sheriff's Office working to resolve an incident. And that doesn't seem like a big deal, but when you look at what other cities have when they have an incident, they won't be able to draw from that depth of people. And that's one of the benefits that comes with contracting. And and on top of what we have on duty, we also have a very large contingent of off-duty personnel that we call in when necessary to assist us with the, with large-scale events. In recent times, is in twenty twenty, when there were riots in Minneapolis, we were requested by the state and by Hennepin County to come and assist them with a large-scale incident. And at that time, we we were sending more than a hundred officers to work to help resolve that issue. We're currently working in in Brooklyn Center to assist with that. And we're doing that at the request of the state and Hennepin County again.
Is there reimbursement for that, Commander?
Uh, there could be, but we're not looking at that right now. We're trying to get through the incident itself and deal with what needs to be dealt with, and then we'll figure out beyond that what, if any reimbursement there is. The sheriff's stance is this is about public safety. And just like if we had something like that happen on this side of the river, we would be asking for resources and help in hopes that they would send it and we could figure out if there's a financial obligation later.
And I just interrupt you there briefly. For the council's sake, can those on the phone understand me? Councilmember Blake, Rainville, Alders?
No.
What, Mr. Mayor, what's the question?
Question is, can you understand me? So I I wanted to bring up a point that, you know, with with the recent incident down in the cities, in Brooklyn Center, just the the relationship that we have, Commander Heath did call to reassure that while they are helping out as requested in the city's area, they are making sure that that we and the other seven municipalities where they are the only law enforcement, they made sure that we are covered. So he made sure that when when something is going on, if residents do have a question, that he's communicated proactively to let let us know that we are covered. They're calling in their extra resources to make sure they can help out outside of Anoka County. But the reassurance that the eight communities that they are the sole law enforcement for and then the other dozen or so that they are assisting the police departments in those cities, the resources are well-balanced and and thought through. So we are, we are never left alone out here just because another city has has a need or a demand. So I just want to make sure that the council is aware of that, that the commander's been very proactive in that communication. Sorry, Commander, go ahead.
No, and and that's a very good point. While we we are always willing to assist where we can. While we're always willing to assist where we can, we always make sure that our needs of Anoka County are met first and we don't abandon that. That's that's part of the planning that goes into it, and that's one of the pieces I would like to bring up. Not only when you have a large-scale event or when something else happens, your costs as a city are fixed. When you sign the contract and you paid for your contract for that year, if we have a large incident and we go over, that doesn't get passed on to the city. It's it's factored into the best, the best that we can, knowing, looking at historically what those costs are. So it is a fixed cost for the city. And that comes to whether or not you have issues with personnel or equipment or other things. When that contract is signed, that's the fixed cost.
Uh, is that Councilmember Alders?
Yes, Mary, phone dropped. Uh, you can try to call back in, but I don't think you need to watch your phone. Be respectful of her call.
She was just calling.
Have you ever tried again here? She, we just missed it. Sorry. I'll try calling her.
Councilmember Ringo here.
All right, let's get you merged back in.
Are you back on, Larry?
Okay. I got Linda, I got Mary, I got Jason?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay.
You want roll up there?
He's good.
Thank you.
Well, and just like, as we were talking, I talked about fixed costs. And what, one of the things that, when you go with the contract, not only do you get the fixed costs, but you get all, you get more direct access to a lot of the services that the sheriff's office provides, whether that's our SWAT, our crime scene unit, our criminal investigation division, the marine unit, or any of those specialties that we have. When you're contracting, not only do you get those things, but you also get the leadership and the administration and the support services that come along with it. When it, and when when you think about that, it seems like a small thing, but the, when you have a deputy working in Now Then responding to calls and incidents, that deputy has access to a sergeant twenty-four hours a day. There's always a supervisor on duty that can help guide them through incidents or calls. Well, that sergeant also has direct access to senior command members in the office. So if I get a phone call from a sergeant who has a question about an incident in Now Then and I don't have the answer, I I have direct contact with the sheriff and chief deputy. So while you're, you're a smaller community with a smaller amount of resources here, those people have direct access to a lot of personnel, equipment, and leadership that can help with anything that's going on in the community. And I was, I sat and did the math when I was looking at the command staff that we have. So there's, there's four licensed commanders like myself, and we have five lieutenants and the sheriff and chief deputy, as well as some civilian command members. If you combine it all, between all of us, we have over three hundred years of law enforcement experience. And that's, and again, I'm just trying to let everybody understand what comes to bear if you have an incident in your city and things that are going on. Those are the people that are going to be helping to lead the the agency and the community through that incident or event, whatever it may be. And that's one of the reasons, like tonight, or or this afternoon, we had a very long planning session to plan on how we were going to respond to the unrest that's going on, we did yesterday. And that's one of the reasons we get called upon to help assist is because we also have the depth of personnel, equipment, and then leadership that can help work through those large-scale events. And it's just, I guess the simplest way to break it all down is when you, when you contract with us, is it really becomes an all-inclusive. You're paying for the ease of of, not only do you have the law enforcement services and the deputies and detectives and community service officers that are out here on the street doing great work, but you get all of the support and leadership that comes with it to help keep that running and provide a smooth, efficient service for the city. And I know it, it sometimes it's a, uh, can be a little bit much to bite off on because when you look at numbers, sometimes it can be expensive, and I understand that. But we really do offer the best possible services for the best possible price in what we, what we provide. The pricing that you get, not only is it well below what cities of your size are are paying for a police department, but you're also getting exceptional service. And that's what I try to, that's the other piece of the puzzle that can be very difficult for people to understand. But the other piece of the puzzle that I, even though there can be a negative with the financial, the city has seen it when the sheriff's office can, you've you've seen our contract numbers fluctuate. If we, if we receive a reduction in what we're paying for life insurance, you've seen it in the in the contract reduction. So we pass those savings on when we can and we reduce costs when we can. And the sheriff is very proactive in looking at contracts and making sure that people are actually getting what they pay for and then that we're providing that at the best possible price and not, you know, what we're charging is what we need to, to not lose any money. And I guess that, while it's even more difficult for me to bring it up, but we've talked about it before, we're at a point where in twenty twenty-two, I will, I will be asking the council to look at expanding the contract. And I would be be looking to expand from an eight-hour contract to twelve, so adding four additional hours a day. But with that, I'd also like to ask to change some things in how we've been contracting. For years, we've been working on the model that we pay, you pay for eight hours a day and we come in whenever there's a need. There isn't always a deputy just dedicated to Now Then. There's always somebody that will come and handle the calls, but you don't have one deputy that their job is to be in Now Then. They cover other areas and come in and take calls and go out. They'll come in and patrol. What I'd like to propose is is moving to that twelve-hour contract, but having that deputy specifically assigned to Now Then for that twelve hours. And and looking at the calls for service, the best time of day was between the the hours of two P M. and two A M. were the city's busiest times. And it's looking at the two thousand and nineteen calls for service, from two A M. to two P M., or excuse me, two P M. to two A M., there were thirteen hundred calls for service in two hundred, twenty nineteen, and six hundred and nineteen of those were priority calls. And the two thousand eighteen numbers were very similar call volumes for that time. So what I'm, what I'm suggesting and and introducing as a proposal is increasing to that twelve-hour contract and having the dedicated hours be from two o'clock in the afternoon to two in the morning. And that would be Monday, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for those, for the year. So every day, you'd have a deputy here in town working from two P M. to two A M., unless they got called away or or had to go to jail or what, something else, but they would be specifically assigned here. We would also change how we look at the squad cars. Right now, we use one of the fleet cars. Now Then pays for one, but we use a fleet car. We would look at doing a dedicated car to the city that has on the back of it serving Now Then, like we do with our other contract cities, to give a little bit more ownership of, or identity, I guess would be the right way of saying that. And when people see the car out and about, they know that that car is specifically dedicated to Now Then. So I know that's a lot to bite off on, but there's a, there's a couple of, there's, there's a lot of advantages to that. And the biggest one is the sheriff's office for years has asked and required all of their contracts to be at a minimum of forty percent proactive time. And right now, and what that is, if that, if, is that's time to go out and be doing general patrol where they're not dedicated to a call, but they can actually be out patrolling. They can be engaging with the community. They can be doing traffic enforcement or a myriad of other things, but proactive time basically means they're not dedicated to a call. So it can be narcotics enforcement. If we have a specific, specific house that's causing issues or concerns with, that they can do targeted enforcement like that during their proactive time, working warrants, and doing things like spending time at Twin Lakes Park and and engaging with people there during the summertime or or during other times as well. And at last calculation, the the proactive time that we had in Now Then was about thirty-four percent. So about six percent below, and that's been very consistent over the, over the last years. So with that said, getting the, getting the proactive time up to at least forty percent is what our goal is, but also working to get more coverage in the city to help with, with targeting different issues and 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 being more visible in the community is is very important. And one of the things that we we really want to work toward. We haven't talked about increases for for quite some time. I think the the contract has been eight hours since its inception, and we're just getting to a point where the city is at, where we need to start moving in that direction. And with that, and I'm not sure what the council's thoughts would be on this, but something that the patrol commander and I talked about and and brought up to the sheriff and he was in in agreement with is if the, if the city can help us find the space to create a substation here where our deputy could. to create a substation here, where our deputy could work out. All they need is a workstation and, and a place to park the car. We do that with many of our other contracts, where they actually have a substation there in the city and a place to park their car. And then they begin and end their shift here in the city and really spend their time here. They don't have to worry about traveling back and forth to our office or anything like that. So it becomes, adding that time will, will make the deputy much more visible in the community, but then also if they're housed here, makes them more visible as well. And the times we're looking at would also make them more accessible to city staff. You know, they can do check-ins with the city if they're starting at 2:00 in the afternoon. They can do check-ins with city staff and see how things are going and what's happening in the community at that time. So I can take a pause here again and, and ask if anybody has any questions.
It'd be interesting to, to see with the next round of stimulus monies that are coming out if there's something that can be utilized too, like we did with our fire station additions.
Yeah. And some of it, it, and, and we realize it can start out very basic. I mean, i- in some of our contracts, it's as much as a place in city hall where they have access to a computer or internet where they can bring their laptop out of their squad and sit down and type reports or, or whatever that may be. And those are, those are finer details that we can always talk about. But I think we're at a point now where it's, we're moving that direction. The city's growing, and then it's time to start taking those small steps as we move forward to start, start going in that direction, getting some more ownership and some more identity with the city and things like that. I did send to Lori, I don't know if she got it out, I sent her that, the example proposal for what a 12-hour contact would look like. I just want to caution the council when they look at that. Those are example numbers, and I would obviously provide exact numbers to the council. But the, the deputy labor contract just settled, so these, all of the wages and stuff like that are not correct. And if we were doing a, an exact proposal on this, I would have new numbers put in so they are exacts and that, before I ever made it an actual proposal to the council.
Gives us something to compare to previous years. And as we've started looking at our, our budget proposals, we can see what that does to our, our overall.
This is Jason. So is the numbers that are in there, is it like, is it close? Because I'm just looking at, it's, you know, 370,000 per hour. And it looks like, based on our 2021 budget, we've got about 250,000 budgets for eight hours. So we're going up 50% an hour, and we're going up, not quite, we're going up like 40% of its cost.
Yes, Councilmember Alders, the, the, these are approximate, but I don't, I just didn't want the, the reason I'm very skeptical about that is I don't want anybody banking on those being exact. But they, they certainly are approximate. I don't think that there would be a hugely significant increase either way, lower or higher.
Okay. And then another question I had is, you said we fielded 1,300 calls, 600 of them were priority calls. And you said of, of the 1,300, how many of them were between 2:00 PM or 2:00 AM? Or that's how many were between 2:00 PM and 2:00 AM?
Yes, I'm sorry if I, if I was unclear, that, there were 1,300 calls between 2:00 PM and 2:00 AM.
And out goes, the percentage was...
What percentage is that? Is that 80% of the calls? There's that 40% of the calls? What is that?
Uh, that's, I think the calls for service in that year were at 1,700 or 1,800. I apologize, I don't have that exact number for you. But I believe there was, uh, let me look.
So how many are between 6:00 PM and 2:00 AM?
Just one second. So between 6:00 PM and 2:00 AM? If you, if you bear with me, I can do the math, otherwise if you'd like, I can, if...
Yes, you can just feed it to Lori, I guess, I mean, just from, and again, on the phone, it's difficult, so bear with me a little bit. I mean, I, my opinion, if you're looking for my opinion, and I obviously want to talk with the team about it because it's a proposal, yeah, I definitely like some of the elements. I, I like the, can we get like, is it eight hours or is it 12 hours? But is there a model that we can get, like, somebody in the town or city of Now Then for that a full block of time versus in and out? Because I mean, some of the folks that talk to, you know, we, it sounds a little crazy, but one of the issues we have is a lot of stuff getting dumped off at night. And a police presence could help some of that, enforce some of that, and maybe find some of that happening. But it's, I think it's difficult when we have a fluctuating schedule. And I really like the A to Z model that we can work towards, where we started in the shift in Now Then, so our officer would have a place to go get his car and then start a day, is that somewhere at the municipal building or whatever? I mean, we could work towards that, but I think, I, I mean, some of the elements of your proposal is, I think are great. I think what the team has to work through is, I mean, it's a hundred thousand dollars more. And Mary probably knows the number of houses off the top of her head, but that's a, you know, that would be a change to what we're, what our citizens are going to pay. We need to understand what do we think that costs, and if it isn't our citizens willing to pay that for the service we're going to get.
And I, I think that's why we're, we're having this initial discussion, councilmember, to say what, what does a 12-hour shift look like? What's the advantage and, and the pros and cons, and then what are the cost realities to it? You know, an extra hundred thousand dollars, I agree that, you know, it's important to remember it's 50% more coverage for 40% more dollars potentially. I, I do like the, the model that has the patrol officer starting in town here every day and has a chance to meet with staff and with business people when they're open. It's one of the problems with doing things at night when nobody's here, it's, it's harder to develop those relationships. But we do have to discuss what's the reality of the budget and how does this fit for the overall cost and benefit to the city.
Councilmember Mary, talk, how many houses are in Now Then?
To, to Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Alders, I'm thinking we're about 1,500 households in Now Then.
That's what I, that's what I think, so it's like a 70 dollars per household increase, if it's a hundred dollars, roughly.
Right. And Mr. Mayor, to, to, Councilmember Alders, also, too, one of the things that, and I'm glad to hear that these were not 2 dollars, yes, a 30% increase, but would, so it would be hard to find 110,000 dollars in the budget without really cutting somewhere else or increasing taxes. The two questions I have is, one is with these, there's something that the council has discussed. May I have a piece of suggestion, a substation or a workstation? What are the costs involved in doing that? So in addition to increase in the check we write to Nooka County Sheriff, what additional costs are, is the city going to incur? Depending on where we place them, what kind of technology is needed? It could be nothing, what I'm going to empty dust is the city office, given the access code, and they can get in there and out. But we, that's a discussion we have. A question I have to Commander Hee is, is 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM, is that what our normal 12-hour shift time is? Or is this specific to just this proposal?
No, Councilmember Rainville, we have multiple different shift times. We, we have shifts that are 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We have shifts that are 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then we have some shift, and we have shifts that are the 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM, and then 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. We also have some shifts that are more close to the eight-hour variety that, that are kind of somewhere in one of those areas.
Thank you to Commander Hee. And I had actually written down that question, but then you talked about the substation and workstation where they would start and finish in Now Then. My concern was, you have a 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Do we have a shift change in there? Do we lose, lose time during the shift change that's dedicated to us when we're starting in and leaving from? That, that kind of answers my question, but thank you. I, I, I will say, I've all, I, I've also, there is a service from Nooka County Sheriff's Office. I know back, years back, other municipalities have provided estimates. But Nooka County does have the depth that, that we need as a city. And so I, I appreciate that, I appreciate the coverage they've given us. Having better numbers will make it easier for the, the council to have a discussion as to what, what do we think on this, and then how can we find this money in the budget.
Mr. Mayor? If the council would like, I can, now that the, that contract with the deputies just settled this week, that's why I don't have the exact numbers. Unfortunately, we've been busy with some things. If you'd like, I can get an exact proposal drawn up, and I can submit that to Lori for review to the council. And I guess my thoughts are, would it be then best to just have the council provide any questions that they have, and I can work towards answering them either at a workshop or a future meeting here?
Yeah, I think having the, the exact numbers, you know, an actual proposal as we come into a budget cycle, and then the opportunity to have the council put their thoughts, thoughts down, and we then have a workshop on it, because it, it's a big deal, it's, it's a big increase. But I think that as, as you looked at justifying it in relationship, we just have to see how we afford that. And this will give us a chance to write some questions down and look at real numbers, and, and then we can take a look at, from a budget standpoint, what does that really mean to us? And is there any place else in our budget that, and we, we'll take a look at this along with what our fire costs are going to be, so we know what our, our emergency response budget should be, so.
And Mr. Mayor? I, I did want to point out to the council, and I hope it was relayed, this was merely an informational piece for the council. I wasn't here trying to get a, a contract passed tonight. I was trying to get out information so the council could digest it and, and ask me any other questions that they might have, and I'd be more than happy to try to answer those.
I, I do have an additional question. And, and I, I think from our meetings with the sheriff in the past, when we get to this point, there's not as much flexibility as the city might like. But is there still an option for an eight-hour? I think that's what Councilmember Alders was saying, you know, what, what options do we have with, with eight hours dedicated? What options do we have, eight hours flexible like we have now? Or is this a, really what the sheriff's going to insist on, is that we increase the hours?
Well, I think we are getting to the point with the calls for service, and there's been a lot of, we're, we are getting to the point where the proactive time is stayed at that lower level, and we, we do require it of every other contract that they're at the 40%. And, and I haven't pushed it, and it is time that, I believe the sheriff will want to see significant movement towards that as we move forward here and, and try to start accomplishing that. Because we haven't changed in years, and I think we, we need to start getting towards that. I don't know what exactly the timeline is, I can work with him. And again, if we have another workshop at some point, he might be available to have that conversation as well. It was just unfortunate he couldn't make it to...
I, I do know in the past that's been a major point, was the, the proactive time, being it up to the minimum, so. We, you know, we just need to see what our options are.
Certainly.
Anything else from the council? Okay, this is a, a good start. Any other questions, if you'd like the commander to get back to some?
I appreciate the time we gave to discuss it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, and thank you, council, for being patient with me being long-winded. I think this is a record for me. So my apologies, I'll, I'll try to shorten up another meeting somewhere down the line to make up for it.
All right, council, good?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if you're okay, I'm going to excuse myself to get back to other things.
So the commander is going to be leaving at this point, he has additional duties that he needs to get to in the city, so.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, commander. Be safe. All right. So, try and move a little, pick up the pace here a little bit. Going to move quarter to the report to the next meeting. Item six, engineering, MS4 permit updates. I, I did check with Shane on this, and this is something that we need to proceed because there's a deadline on this. If you look through the new MS4 permit updates, there's a, a number of things that have changed. Basically, what we've done in the past is authorize the engineering firm to handle this for us. This is the stormwater pollution prevention plan. Basically, we have to inventory all the, the ponds in the community, all the retention ponds. We have to evaluate them, we have to process the material in there if they get to a certain point of contamination. So our engineering, Shane worked with Joe and Lori to work about responsibility. So if you can see in the report, they've identified who's going to be doing what and when. There are some additional items that the MPCA has required here. And so what we have requested here is that we would authorize staff to process and submit the MS4 permit application to the MPCA. And I'd say what's in front of you is a, is a compilation of Shane, Lori, and Joe. So the request is to move to authorize submission by staff. Did people have questions about the council member, which woman is this?
This is Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Rainville?
If you're moving that, I will second.
Okay, so I moved that we authorize staff to submit MS4 permit application to MPCA. We have a second from Councilmember Rainville, discussion. Seeing none on this end and hearing none on the phone, I will again do a roll call vote. Councilmember Alders? You there, Jason?
Yeah, approved, sorry for the delay.
All right, Councilmember Blake?
Council?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
And Mayor Pilon, aye, carries unanimously. All right. We have Resolution 2021-13. This is the Ebony and Garnet Improvement Plan. And this is authorizing plans and specifications for road improvements to be prepared by the engineer. This would be advertising for bids for said projects according to our 429 applicable laws. So you have your packet there in front of you. I would take a motion to proceed with Resolution 2021-13.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
I propose that we move forward with Resolution Number 2021-13, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for Ebony Street and Garnett Street.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Greenberg, second by Councilmember Alders. We will have a roll call vote. Councilmember Alders?
Approved.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mayor Pilon, aye. Carries unanimously. Resolution 2021-14, the same now for the Rogers Lake area, and I do have a memo here from the clerk in the Rogers Lake area. Everybody get the memo on the paving of 185th Lane? Phone people all get that? So the engineer is asking the council's decision on whether to include that 185th upgrade from gravel to blacktop as part of our proposal, so when he goes out and gets prices or gets estimates, he can know whether or not to include that. So at this point, we have two residents on that section of road. Both have weighed in. One currently has a property that I think is for sale still, and that resident is not in favor of paving the portion of the street, and the other one contacted the office, is in favor of paving that portion of the street. It's something we aren't doing a lot of attention to right now, because we'd have to take the road grader down there for that one section of road, and so they don't get down there much to actually maintain that road. But if we're going to do it, it seems to make sense that we do it at this time and incorporate the cost with the bigger project. I think it would be very prohibitive to do that on its own at a later time. But, so I will take.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I have moved that we approve Resolution 2021-14, approving plans and specifications and ordering out the type list for bids, which includes the 185th, which is currently gravel, and that's supposed to be blacktop for that fall.
Okay, Councilmember Rainville has made a motion. Did I hear a second there?
I second this.
All right, so we have Councilmember Rainville makes a motion to approve Resolution 2021-14 to include the blacktopping and upgrade of 185th Lane Northwest as part of the proposal, and Councilmember Blake seconds. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, we'll start with Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mayor Pilon, aye. Motion carries. All right. All right. Back to the Rogers Lake area, Resolution 2021-15. The cost had been estimated. And we have the project cost at $440,000. And what we need to do is, Item 3 on that resolution, put in a hearing date for the proposed assessment hearing. I am proposing May 13, which is a Thursday. Both the engineer and the attorney said they were available that day. Does that date work for the council? Had a guess from Councilmember Greenberg.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
May 13th, please, works for me. I just want to be sure that the dollar mark in Item 1 doesn't reflect the paving of 185th. So just make sure Lori clarifies that with the engineer.
Joel?
What?
Can you call Shane and ask him that? 612?
I think I might have made my contact. And ask him if this, May 13th works.
If that number includes the 185th.
If this number, or this 440 includes.
You're calling his office, you got to call cell.
Okay.
If the 880 includes the.
All right.
So we will check on that right now. Shane said he would have his cell with him tonight.
I didn't get that, Mary.
The question is, is the number that's on Resolution 2021-15, does that include the upgrade to 185th as part of the total cost? Or is that in?
If you look at Page 3 where it shows the. This is, this is Joel. Hey, we're in the meeting, and we're wondering, in the Rogers Lake area, the total cost, $880,000, did that include the upgrade to 185th that was dirt, and now we're going to pave it?
Where did you see that?
Shane says it does.
Yes. Councilmember Rainville?
All right, just hang on, Shane.
Councilmember Rainville?
I wrote, the reason I asked, I stopped at that number, Alders. The only thing I'm questioning is, because I've got plenty of those specific dollars in the, that's not numbered, but the last page of the packet. And so, that's why I just want to be sure that if we're going to have a document, the document is correct.
So, we have Shane on the phone here. If he takes a look at the Resolution 2021-14, Councilmember Rainville, you're saying on the last page, the total estimated project cost doesn't match the Resolution dash 20, or dash 15? You see that there?
Is this what she's looking at right here? 501 versus 440?
No, we're looking at the last page, 863 versus 880. We got 880 here.
Uh huh.
We got 863 here.
Yeah, when we're looking at the Rogers Lake Proposal Resolution 2021-14, the very last page, total estimated project cost, we have 863,000, whereas the Resolution 2021-15 has 880,000. So one's 863, one's 880.
Mr. Mayor, also shows on Page 29 of 45 for the actual street improvement project pages, where it shows 185th Avenue Lane, and then it shows on Page 33 of 45, the site construction for that 185th Avenue, and Page 35 of 45, if you look in, that was the diameter of each street cross-section.
Yeah, we're looking at the discrepancy between the Resolution 2021-15, where it says 880 is the total project cost, and on the very last page, total estimated project cost of 863.
And just as a reference, if you look at the next resolution, that has the same dollar mark in the resolution that is on the last page of that previous resolution that takes the dollar mark off.
Right.
I just want dollars to be reflected correctly in any resolutions that we have.
So, for those of you on the phone, Councilmember Greenberg is attempting to rectify that with Shane right now.
It would seem to me that if 185th was added, it would be this higher cost that's in this resolution, and maybe it's not in this one.
Come on, speak with her.
Okay.
Shane is talking right now, we'll hear what he has to say.
So our big question is, on the very large packet we got with Rogers Lake Resolution, on the very back page, it has the total estimated cost of 863,763, but then on our resolution to declare the cost to be assessed and to prepare the assessment, that proposal has 880. So 863 versus 880,000. We're thinking that this Resolution 2021-15 is included 185th, and the other one, the large packet, does not. That's what we're thinking. Okay. With the 185th Lane added. Okay. So if I write that in here. Okay. So indeed, it is the lower, it's the lower cost.
So is the number on 2021-15 wrong?
Correct.
Okay, so good catch, Councilmember Rainville. The Shane says. So Shane says, total estimated project cost in the packet, 863,763 is the accurate number, including 185th. And the Resolution 2021-15, the 880 is elevated, so those numbers will have to be corrected by city staff.
So the 863 is right, the 880 is wrong?
According to Shane, that is correct.
One more time, what's one is correct?
863, 763.
Is the correct number?
That is the correct number, and that does include 185th.
Okay.
And so we would divide that in half for the residence portion.
So does that mean we can't hold on to this tonight?
Can we go on with those numbers?
Yeah. Yeah, we can amend, we can amend it to show the reflected numbers according to our engineer on the phone here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I would amend my motion to approve Resolution 2021-15 with the corrected numbers of 863 to 763.
And the city portion versus the residence portion, what's the half of that? Anybody doing that?
What is that?
One more time, Jason?
431, 881.
You want to confirm that with Shane?
So Shane, the residence portion would be half of that, 431,881. Can you verify that?
That's correct.
What did he say? I can't hear.
Half of the 863,763 is 431,881.
Okay, and the first number was 863, did he say that, or 63?
863,763 is on Page 2 of the Resolution 2021-14, where it goes.
So is the 440,075 correct then?
So Mary, I agree, yes.
Yeah, good for you, Mary.
Hang on, I'm still having some discussion.
Good for you. Yeah, there it is, right there. Okay.
Hang on one second.
That's what's surprising is I'm not.
Okay, he says the 440 is correct, because we had made those improvements with the culverts.
Okay, so according to Shane, the city portion of 440 is accurate, because that includes the culvert portion that we did this fall, this last fall. So 863, 763 is the total. Now he's got it evenly divided. Let's see, the city. Okay. So the residence portion is what? Because we weren't dividing it evenly, we were picking up the extra cost.
Okay, so Shane, if 440,75 is the city's responsibility, do you have a number for the residence responsibility?
That means the residence responsibility is 423,688.
So we're waiting to hear.
Is that right?
Well, we divided it in half, and we did, we got 431,880.
One more time, Jason?
That was where our discrepancy was coming?
One more time, Jason? 423?
423,688.
2021-15? Shane? Okay. But this is for the Rogers Lake area improvement, Resolution declaring cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessment and notice of assessment hearing. So we were first going to nail down the numbers, and then nail down the date for the hearing.
Mary, Linda, are you clear on what the numbers are now?
I'm throwing the numbers, but I don't have one clue what's in this set, do you? I'm throwing the numbers, but I don't have one clue what's in this set, do you?
Joel's still talking to Shane to confirm the residence portion.
What?
Joel is still talking to Shane to confirm the residence portion.
Okay.
Oh.
Yep. He has to connect to his computer at work through VPN to verify what the residence number is.
Okay.
He said he'd give me a call, he can get through.
All right, so Shane is checking on his computer, he has to get into his work computer. So let's, let's move forward with 2021-16 while we're waiting to hear back from Shane. Councilmember Rainville.
Given all the numbers that are on this one, I want that the second resolution 2021-15, which is declaring cost to be assessed and ordering preparation of proposed assessment and notice of assessment hearing within March 13th date and if the council, what day?
May.
May 13th. Yeah, and we can maybe do a most same day and do in six o'clock or six and seven and seven and eight. Either one works for me, but other working people need to speak up. Right.
Hour's going to be enough?
Is anybody pressing that motion out, question that?
What's, what's the time? Six o'clock?
She was waiting for a clock, Jason. What's the time? Did it come at six or seven?
I can make, I can make either work. Let's choose six.
Six.
Six o'clock and we'll do seven o'clock on the other one?
Yeah. Do we need a whole hour?
I would guess so, yes. March 12th leave?
That's fine. I second that, or second that, I guess.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Greenberg made the motion to include the assessment hearing date of May 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM at City Hall. Councilmember Alders seconded. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I will go through roll call vote. Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake? Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mayor Pelon, aye, carries unanimously. So while we're waiting to hear back from Shane, we can go on to the joint powers fire protection agreement to terminate. Again, Ramsey has requested this, they are voting on this tonight as well. The, the key provision from our attorney is that none of this is in effect. We can sign it tonight, but this doesn't go into effect if perchance the governor fails to sign our legislation or the legislature significantly changes our legislation. Should the legislature pass what we approved and the governor sign it, then this would be our termination with the city of Ramsey as of April 26, 2021 to be the date of record.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Rainville.
Would you like to speak when you're done?
So this was an item that was requested by the city of Ramsey and they're, they're trying to identify a clean break and our JPA goes through December 31st of 2021, should we need that much time. We have a, a bill before the legislature that's been agreed upon by all parties and should the legislature not change any portion of that bill, that addresses the relief association transfer of funds. And if the governor signs it, we're okay with this document that's in front of us. The problem being if the, somebody in the legislature changes the body of that bill or the governor fails to sign it for whatever reason, if it gets tied up in other bills and doesn't get signed, we are not willing to have this document stand over our rights that we have currently under the JPA. The JPA has statements regarding the relief association that requires responsibility on the part of the city of Ramsey to make our new department whole and the legislation covers that, but if we don't get the legislation, we want to have the JPA be the overriding factor. We're not giving up those rights until we have new rights in hand. So the attorney says we can sign this, but it is contingent on the legislature and the governor doing their portion. Otherwise, this is null and void and we go back to the JPA requirements so that we can make sure that the relief association is properly transferred, relief association funds, pension amounts. The fire chief, working with the current chief in Ramsey, wants the date to be April 26th, 2021, so that would be the date of record. But again, it's dependent on the legislature and the governor doing their portion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to find the, I asked where to put that, this is a packet. So Rupi's recommendation is that we table action and some such time is however assigned the special legislation. So why are we not saying if we sign this, we're not giving up our, our rights?
The, the fire chiefs wanted to get the separation going and so what Rupi did is he put in paragraph one under agreement. If you take a look at that, "In the event the special legislation as agreed to by the parties and submitted by the state legislature to be amended by the legislature or not signed into law by governor, the JPA will not be considered terminated and the parties retain their respective rights under the JPA." That's Bob's exclusion. If, we don't believe the legislature's going to mess with it, but if it does, that's our clause and we go back to JPA.
So this agreement is not what was originally emailed to us? Is part of that letter from Rupi?
That.
Hello?
That is correct.
Okay, and I, yeah, I was going on, what Rupi had said, what was mailed to us, mailed to us on the 29th. But if this is a revise, and I, I would, I would compare side to side. If it survives and Rupi has put this in there for our protection, then I would, if not, say no.
Yeah, his, his original recommendation was don't sign it until the governor signs and it was causing some heartburn in a neighboring community and so Bob put that in there saying, we can sign it, it makes you feel better and we'll declare it April 26th, but until the governor and the legislature, the legislature and the governor have done their part, then this is, this is not active until we see the signature from the governor without changes.
It would have been nice, Mr. Mayor, it would have been nice to know that.
I did not realize that that wasn't communicated.
Okay.
So residence, 317,600?
And again, there's nothing says we have to sign it now.
1,63. Total cost, 863,763 dollars.
So again, if you're comfortable with, with paragraph one, we can approve it tonight. If you're, if you want to wait until the governor signs it, we can just tell Ramsey that.
Yeah, and this includes the 185th.
The date will still be the 26th, but it won't be approved in before that.
Mary, we need to go.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alders, if, if this is indeed what our attorney is telling us, I would, I would move to.
Okay.
Affirm the agreement.
All right, if worse comes to worse, for the.
Agreement.
While they're.
February 26th, 2021.
Could we say, we decided not to do 185th after tonight?
Number one of the agreement, protect our rights as a city, if the legislative place does not get passed and signed by the governor.
Okay. All right.
And this same agreement is before the Ramsey council tonight.
Right, I thought I'll never do that.
Before we get into that, let's finish this.
The word agreement to this area is long as all the stipulations are in that, right? All right, okay.
All right, do we have a motion?
Yes, I second that.
So we have, Councilmember Rainville made a motion to approve the agreement and Councilmember Blake seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mayor Pelon, aye, passes unanimously. All right, Joel has heard back from the engineer, Nelson. What have you for us?
All right, so the total cost for the Rogers Lake improvement area is 863,763,000. The city's portion is 546,163 dollars. That includes the culverts that we put in and the subgrade, subgrade prep we did.
546 what?
546,163.
All right.
That's the city's portion.
Okay.
The residence portion is 317,600.
All right, people get those numbers?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I just want to, what was the, the city, is it 546,163?
That is, that is correct.
All right, thank you.
54.
I thought it was 52, 54. It's so hard, it's near here. It is, it is. I have no appreciation for you, Mayor.
546,163, what was the, what was the residence portion?
317,600.
Got it.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I did, out of curiosity, ask Shane, I just said, in the case that we wanted to not pave the gravel, could we still do that even after we approved this? He said, yes. Just in case. But we did, we did agree tonight to pave 185th. That is included in that, 863,763.
Everybody follow that? 863, 763 includes 185th?
Yeah.
All right, so now we have, back to the motion to approve with the amended numbers, with the corrected numbers. Again, thank you, Councilmember Rainville. We have approved 2021-14 already and so we're now looking for a motion to approve 2021-15.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I move that we approve Resolution 2021-15, declaring the cost to be assessed, ordering the preparation of proposed assessment, notice of assessment hearing for the Roger Lake Improvement Project with 863,763 being the total cost, 546,163 being the city's portion and the residence portion being 317,600 dollars. Being that those changes are made, then I propose this be approved.
With the May 13th, 7 o'clock?
May 13th, 2021, 7 o'clock.
I second that.
We have a motion, was that Councilmember Rainville second?
No, Blake.
Councilmember Blake. So we have a motion by Councilmember Greenberg, a second by Councilmember Blake to approve Resolution 2021-15 with the corrected numbers with the hearing date of May 13th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, a roll call vote, vote. Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mayor Pelon, aye, and it's unanimous. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
Was this prepared by our lawyer, Rupi?
This would have come from the lawyer, Rupi, with information provided to him by the engineering firm.
All right. I'll put it upon myself to be the one who sends him those changes, is that okay?
Send it to the lawyer.
Or would it be lawyer? Okay.
And, and in that, let her know that we approved the upgrade on 185th. All right. Cody Lot Split. Sorry for making you guys wait so long if I didn't.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
We look back at our resolution 2021-17 to 2021-18, which is declaring the official intent of the city of Dallas to reimburse certain expenditures from the protein improvement bond to be issued by the city. We need to pass that.
And now we.
And 2021-18 will need to have the dollar amount changed in number two.
All right, sorry, that wasn't on my agenda, so I missed that one. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2021-17 as presented. Councilmember Rainville.
Did you make them off or are you asking?
I'm asking for one.
I'm sorry, what?
I'm asking.
Asking, okay, well, I would, I would move that we approve Resolution 2021-17, which is declaring the official intent of the city of Dallas to reimburse certain expenditures from the protein improvement bond to be issued by the city. And this was in Rockwood suit that emanated from that.
Have a motion by Councilmember Rainville to approve Resolution 2021-17 as presented, seconded by Councilmember Alders. Do we have any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Alders?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mayor Pelon, aye, carries unanimously. And now we have 2021-18, which needs amended numbers.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-18, claiming the official intent of the city of Dallas to reimburse certain expenditures under the proceeds of improvement bond to be issued by the city. proceeds of improvement bond to be issued by the city, um, for the Rogers Lake area project, with the amended number of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars.
All right, we have a motion, and which woman seconded? Who is the second?
Blake.
Blake. Councilmember Alders moves resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen with the amended numbers. Councilmember Blake seconds, is there any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call vote, councilmember Alders.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Mayor Pelon, aye. Motion carries. All right, now, we're on the Cody lot split.
I'm closed.
So the Cody lot split, uh, this has been quite an arduous project. Um, do a lot of work and a lot of, oh no.
Can you get your notebook today?
I do, mine, for some reason, I'm locked up here, so. Thank you very much. All right, so we have a, an action that had come before the planning and zoning. And so you have in your packet findings, uh, let's see, so first we have the findings and recommendations from planning and zoning. We have findings and decision for the council. And what we're looking at is a lot split, fifty-eight point four seven acres, uh, splitting off ten acres as parcel A and keeping the remaining forty-eight point four seven acres as parcel B. A single-family home is proposed for each parcel. Uh, part of what we were challenged with here was getting the engineering, uh, numbers all together, getting them reviewed by the county, getting them processed by the city engineer, and then getting findings put together. So, um, parties involved have been working very hard to get this done and would like to get moving on their projects. So, the questions that remain, and you got your emails from Shane, and I don't know when that came out, uh, I had worked with Shane and Liz and Lori last week, and I thought that was all processed last Wednesday. When I contacted Lori, obviously, with us being closed on Fridays, city being closed on Fridays, a lot of this didn't get caught until Monday, and so we've been working diligently to get this done. So we apologize for the lateness of this, but the Codies have been working hard on this and would likely see this get done. Uh, talked with, Shane talked with Lori, talked with Liz, and talked with the Bob Rupi, the attorney, and it does appear that everything's in place, we need no more, um, public hearings. It was just the clarification. And so what came from Shane, that's should be included in the findings, but I have no idea when Lori printed the last finding, so I will read to you, uh, a couple of quick things that the Cody's attorney was working with Liz on. One, in the findings on parcel A, the driveway is to be constructed, uh, is nearly centered on the thirty-three-foot flaglot access as possible. So, so if you've got your map there, you see that the parcel A runs along the east side of this parcel, this is right across from the Stadia and Lutheran Church, uh, right behind the Ryan Thompson property. And so along the east side of that property, there's thirty-three feet of flaglot, and because there is no other road in this case, the variance was permitted for thirty-three-foot lot, uh, flaglot access. Uh, the clarification was the driveway should be centered in that thirty-three feet along that access. And again, if I misspeak anything, feel free to jump in. The drainage easements, as required by Anoka County, there's an Anoka County ditch on the property, and there are some private ditches and wetlands on the property. Uh, there is to be a twenty-foot buffer on either side of the county and private ditches, and that's been agreed to. Uh, there was some clarification that these easements are for maintaining the ditch, so there will be no utility easements there, it's simply drainage easements. Uh, and that condition five on your findings from Liz, um, uh, should be amended to read drainage and utility easements should be drainage only. Drainage easements shall be provided over ditches to a distance of twenty feet either side of all county and private ditches as measured from the wetland boundary. The driveway on parcel B is to be a minimum of fifteen feet from the west property line, understanding at the easement on two hundred and first, uh, the county will designate where that driveway enters into the property, but once it enters into property, it needs to be at least fifteen feet away from the west property line, and there needs to be proper drainage since the Tiger Street development over there does drain through this property into the county ditch. So with those findings, was there anything else in the findings that I missed?
Just in regards to six G, in regards to how she had it written for the driveway, it was, she had it as city road standards, and it's a driveway.
All right. Yeah, so it should say driveway standards rather than local streets. And that would be something that would be addressed when you pull up building.
Right, right, building.
And I don't see anything else on here, so. So with that, as presented, uh, from the recommendation with the planning and zoning and with the corrections that Liz and Shane presented here in conjunction with the Cody's So we've got two thirty-six inch culverts, the buried culverts to be removed, grading can occur within the buffer, provided buffer is reestablished. Um, looks like the minimis is good on the wetland impact for parcel B. So with that said, I would accept a motion to approve the findings and recommendations of the planner and the planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor, it's taken.
Councilmember Alders.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, last reconfiguration and additional easement based on the findings of fact on the April thirteenth documents presented to the city council.
And let's, uh, let's make that the most current copy to make sure that what we got here tonight, uh, like I said, there were some, this was being reviewed as late as three o'clock this afternoon, so, per the current copy that's on file with the city, if you would be okay with that. Uh, there's one item, uh, for lot split conditions, I think the, you still owe a legal description? Kristen?
Yeah.
So the legal description indeed are prepared for review and recording. Other than that, I think we've got everything in. So we've got a motion to accept the recommendation with the most current findings of fact as presented to the applicant on the afternoon of April thirteenth. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Alders and a second by councilmember Greenberg. Any other discussion?
Do we have any prerequisites on what county towns that are being, like we have for areas that are being developed?
We do not.
Um, and how it's part of the city?
Uh, to councilmember Blake, we do not at this point, other than what's in our ordinances, uh, as for architectural, uh, or minimum requirements, we don't have this like we do in the special zoning section over on the east.
So is, are there any plans that have to come in that have to be agreed upon, or can people, if it's not a development, can people build whatever home they want?
They can, and they will submit their building, building plans for approval to the city.
What do you think?
Uh, they, they will be required to submit their building plans for review by the city. That's right.
That's what I wanted to know.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing and hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'd like to say.
And Mayor Pelon, aye. So four with one abstention. And I will, councilmember Rainville had explained earlier on, with enough information coming in at the, at the last hour here, she was not comfortable that she had understood it all. I think some of us have been through enough that being in planning and zoning and everything else we've gone through, it's, it's pretty clear what we've gotten into here, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I just, I go about my tears and stuff, and it's nowhere in the, I find a layout of what Shane proposed. Everything was the wetlands, it was, everything, it was the drainage system, I was trying to follow along with what you're saying on a map, I can't find. So, I, I appreciate all the work that was done on that, um, and I, I know the Codies have put in a lot of time and effort and the code, that staff, the view, uh, but again, without having that in front of me and just repeating the memorandum from Shane, I'm just not comfortable with it. I'm not saying that it's right or wrong, I'm just not comfortable, so.
And, and I do apologize with, with, with the questions that came up, and this has been going on since last summer, and, uh, this is something we, we were hoping to get done in February. When, when word got to the Codies that it looks like it might be May, um, I was able to step in and try and expedite this, so, part of that is my confusion, I did not give the planner enough time to, with what we had worked on with the engineering, the planner didn't have time to put together a packet that included, repeated everything that was in planning and zoning. But the maps should have been part of that process.
Yeah, and, yeah, I mean, I went back to, luckily I'm sitting here in my latest office, and I looked at my Pittsburgh T and D packet, and I don't even find a map in there. So, again, just, you know, I, I know a lot of work has been put into it, but I, myself, when I, as I said earlier, I'm not comfortable, I'm not going to put my name on something I'm not comfortable with, so.
And that's fine.
I look to the Codies and what they want to do, and they're just picking it out.
You know, we, we appreciate, we don't look for rubber stamps, we look for, uh, people to know what they're getting into, and so, you know, as, as we said earlier, catching those numbers, that's, that's one of your specialties, and you want to know what you're doing before you do it, and we appreciate that, too, so. But at this point, uh, we do have approval, and so, thank you for your patience. Dryden's, you hopefully will have something to go forward with next week.
That's it? I, I feel like I should do a dance, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You can.
Can I, can I catch that?
No.
And it, and it, I'll, I'll just say for the record, thank you for your patience. Um, I believe we've got everything covered here, like I say, you've got the one legal description yet to get in, and obviously, anything that comes up with the approvals of the, uh, building designs and things, so.
And do we submit that to Lori and then, the description?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she can take care of it from there, so. If she needs to pass it on to whoever, she'll take care of it, but I would just say, at this point, continue to deal with Lori's.
Okay.
Any other questions on your part?
Yeah.
And I apologize that I've been thinking clearly at all, we had to rearrange our agenda and put you first and not put you through everything else, but I really did think we'd be going faster tonight than we did, so.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you, thank you for your patience. And, and for the council, we would, I'd recommend that we recess until Tuesday, February twentieth, at seven o'clock, to address the rest of the items on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
So I'll make a motion to recess.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I propose we recess and we take up the items on our agenda that we had tabled till next Tuesday, and we pick up the rest of the schedule at that time.
All right, so we have a motion to recess until Tuesday for the rest of the agenda and anything else that's appropriate at that time?
Why?
Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I second, uh, councilmember Greenberg's motion.
A motion by councilmember Greenberg to recess until Tuesday the twentieth, seven o'clock, uh, seconded by councilmember Rainville. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Alders.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
And Mayor Pelon, aye. Carries unanimously, we are recessed until Tuesday.
Good night, all.
Good night.